Okay. Welcome to this meeting. It's called the World, and it's about the world causes.
Thank you, Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Carr is absent. Councilmember Case?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember LeVar?
Here.
Councilmember Sonier?
Here.
And Councilmember Sawyer is absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you all join me in the place of... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
That's me. That's me.
Off to the left, start. We're going to have... Agenda number three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. And Suzanne, help me.
Yes, Mayor Levy. This evening, on the agenda, speaks that we have appointments to Keep With The Park Beautiful and to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have one appointment this evening, and it's to Keep With The Park Beautiful. That application was sent to council, and just so we can just go over the rules of it. We have advertised that pursuant to council's policy. We've put a notice in the city's website, the Facebook page, the website. We've mailed them to all the incumbents and everything. And we've received one application from Sierra, and I hope I say it right. Kimmanen? Okay. So obviously, Sierra's in the audience. And we're very excited that she has applied to be a member of the Keep With The Park Beautiful.
Terrific. Great. Thank you, Sierra. Would you like to come up? And then, why don't you take half the minute and just introduce your name and address, and why you're here today?
Yes. So I'm Sierra Kineman. You said it correctly. Sineman with a K. And I live in Woodland Park for about two years now. And I actually work for Victory Life Church in town. So we're still portable. We meet at the CSCS school. But really, just desire to help and be a part of our community and to really see what are some needs and how can we as a church, and just knowing other volunteers in town, be a part of helping meet some of those needs.
Great.
That's great. Counselor, any questions for Sierra? We appreciate you being here. I love it because I don't know you. That probably sounds bad. We love new faces.
Sure. Yeah.
Love...
We love young faces too, Ms. Sonier.
Definitely young faces. Thank you for being here. It'll be a great opportunity for you to work with some other great people at Keep With The Park Beautiful. I'd just say to you and your folks in the church, encourage them to reach out. Our community is based really on volunteers. And we seem to know that today at 3B. So we thank you for being here. Counselor, do we have anything else before we approve Ms. Kineman? Keep With The Park Beautiful. Nothing at all. Thank you. I'll ask you to stay there because I think Suzanne will swear you in. Assuming that we get you going there.
Okay.
Now, we have a motion to approve Sierra Kineman.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Sierra.
Okay. I think they have a meeting very soon. That's where we're coming from. You know, for sure, yes, things will be awesome. So let's come out here, see if we can set it up. And we'll have you raise your hand. I would be that from the highest here in the United States. To solve this, we have to solve this. That is the law of the Constitution. The Constitution of the United States. It's beautiful. It's the best. It's wonderful. Thank you. It's great. The People Who Are Beautiful Committee. I'll try to type it back down. I'll jump out to you. I had to mention you. Thank you. I'll have him sign it and make it official. And then Thor has presents for you.
Thank you.
Presents isn't a stretch. Just wait. And you can keep that one. Thank you. Welcome.
Okay. Congratulations, Sierra. Thank you very much. You don't have to leave so fast. Okay. We're going to move on to Agenda 3B and bench rep.
Before Ben starts, I just want to kind of... Go ahead, Ben.
Sorry, I'm just excited.
I know. I just want to recap kind of what occurred last year. As you know, city council, city staff came in the budget process and was really looking for improving U-Pass Cultural Center. We had some issues with the aesthetic, the actual carpet itself. And, you know, so we were intending only to replace the carpet at the time. But with some innovation, I'll let Ben kind of talk about where we actually took it to a different level. So Ben?
Yes. So with the generous help from Habitat for Humanity, we were able to turn this into this.
It's beautiful.
And so I am really excited. One, because these guys came up, and they are the example of what a work crew should be. These guys were happy. They were energetic. They were excited. And honestly, seeing the attention to detail that they put into every single plank and every single board that was installed, despite a couple of different construction challenges that we run into and some lead time challenges. These guys were so much fun to work with. And so I just wanted to thank you guys so much because every time I came in there, you guys were smiling. You guys just made it pleasant. I would make excuses to go down to the cultural center just to hang out with you guys. So we really appreciate everything you did. And I was also learned a little bit about the history of Thursday today. And it's fitting that we're presenting this on Thursday because that's the day of Thor, and this is the hammer team that made all this happen. And then the last thing I'll say too is out of any construction project I've ever been on, you guys had the best playlist I've ever heard too.
That's awesome.
It's the little things in life, right? I'm going to have Ben help me with this. And let's see. Jamie and... Yeah, help us. Yeah. Let's come up here. Ben, I'm going to...
Jamie? Ben, it looks like you're already dressed for Arkansas.
All you volunteers that helped, we'd love to have you up.
Some of the old guys, they're dead already. So first, and a lot of you know that Jamie has been CEO of Habitat for the last number of years, has done tremendous work. He had a project that was actually the project of the year, not for Woodland Park, not for Colorado Springs, not for the state of Colorado, but for the United States of America.
Awesome.
And so that's the project that the loft house grew up. And just a tremendous job. Fortunately, unfortunately for them, they're moving on to Arkansas. I'd be kidding them because I've only lived here 30 years, but I've never known anybody else that's moved from Woodland Park to Arkansas. I know there's something wrong with that picture. But to start with, we're dearly going to miss Ben and Jamie and everything they've done for the community. This is an amazing plaque. And it says, "The U-Pass Cultural Center recognizes Pike's Peak, Habitat for Humanity, in appreciation for the volunteers that have given over 900 hours..." I know that number is a lot higher than that, "of service during the renovation of U-PCC." Ben, give us a sense for how much they saved our community.
So for that project, when I ran it through my construction estimator, it saved us close to $60,000.
Woo! Excellent. That's great.
So let me give this to you. And thank you very much.
There, you got a lot of rounds in there.
A big part of this. We want to give you a mayor's pin on behalf of city council, certainly on behalf of our community. And thank you very, very much. I mean, $60,000 worth of labor. We couldn't have done it without you. And the proof is in the pudding. I mean, fantastic job. We just can't thank you enough. This is just a small token of our appreciation. So thank you very, very much. That really means a lot. Thank you very much. You bet. You probably got one.
How did you do all this? I did all the work.
No, I know. I know Karen did. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys. Great work to be doing.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you so much.
Don't let the work get out. I can be had for visa.
Thanks so much.
It's so pretty.
Okay.
He's showing off.
Show off.
Sorry.
It's great. The first time I saw Mike, when you all see him for the first time. Nicole gets to work it every day. Just his big smile comes to my face. So once again, great job. Let me turn it over to our city manager here in Tasmun, and we'll go from there.
Well, what I'm going to do now, maybe it's a surprise to several people here. I hope not. But I'm going to introduce two new employees of the city. We just mentioned one of them. I'll bring her up first, Nicole Evans. So Nicole has just been recently hired to be our event center coordinator for the U-Pass Cultural Center. So she gets to enjoy this new renovation. And she's helping with a lot of, you know, the, some consulting with Ben. And we have a little bit more to do. And they're consulting really closely on how we complete those renovations. It's looking great now, but she's already jumping in headfirst and working through some cost analysis and already taking pictures and marketing and so forth. So I wanted to bring her up and just kind of introduce yourself and why you decided to, why you wanted to work in this new position.
Appreciate it. Totally not prepared for this, but I'm excited about this role. I have always done event planning on the side. My background is in fashion design and interior design. So I think those skills will also serve me well in this new role. But I love Woodland Park. My husband and I have lived here for almost two years now. And when we moved here, the first time we came to visit, we felt like we were finally home. And so I'm really thrilled to be a part of the city officially. And in this role, I'm really excited about the future of the cultural center.
We're glad to have you.
The first time I accidentally met Nicole, I was walking through the, through back here. And she was giving her, was it insanity class?
Yes.
Yeah. By accident, and scared the heck out of me. So, but thanks, Nicole. We really appreciate you coming to the city. I want to bring up to, I want to bring up our new accountant. We haven't introduced our new accountant yet. So Monae Edwards, if you could please come forward. What I'd like, so as you know, we hired a new accountant to assist with the daily operations of the finance department and help with our, help the finance director. And we're, I guess the joke that we'll throw out there is that me and Mike were going through the interview process. And we were so, we were so impressed that somehow she got the title of employee of the year before she even started. But we are very impressed. She was, was probably one of the best interviews I've ever, I've ever sat in on. So just bring up Monae and have Monae introduce herself and why you came to Woodland Park. Thanks.
Thank you. I am so excited to be at the city. I love Woodland Park. I'm a native of Green Mountain Falls. Lived here almost all my life. And while I went to school in Manito, Woodland Park was really where I spent most of my time. And I still do. I like to shop here. I like the services that are offered in town. And I like the small-town feeling. I think it's very unique and it's fabulous. And it makes me feel at home. I have, guess I have a lot to live up to because I, this whole, you know, employee of the year thing was news to me. But, yeah, no pressure at all. But I'm loving it here. And I'm so, it was really the best interview I've ever had in my career. It was great. And all the people that I worked with, truly, they made me feel very welcome. Thank you.
Excellent. Welcome.
Okay. We'll move on to Agenda 3C and Suzanne.
Thanks, Mayor Levy. I have something very exciting to talk to everybody about tonight, and it's the 2020 census. May not be as exciting to you as it is to me. But as your city clerk, I will be the Woodland Park, the municipal, excuse me, Woodland Park's representative on the census for 2020. And my responsibility is to promote the census to the community, to the council, to anybody that I can to get them to participate. And I will bring this to you quarterly, the census updates. And tonight's just a quick overview for those of you that aren't familiar with what the census is. So first, the census is a count of all the persons living in the United States that is conducted every 10 years by the federal government, and it is required by the US Constitution. It is used to determine the number of seats each state has in the House of Representatives, how federal and state legislative districts are redrawn, and the appropriation of federally funded programs. If council so desires, I have a list here of all of the federally programs that come, we get the money from for the census. Okay? The census will be conducted on April 1st, 2020. And the data collection will begin on March 23rd, 2020 and continue through August of 2020, when it will conclude. Households will receive a postcard with instructions for completing the census beginning in March of 2020. Who should respond to the census? Everyone. Census postcards are sent to all of the households in the United States to collect information about each person living in the household. The Census Bureau is conducting special counts for population living in group quarters or who are unsheltered. So they have a plan to count the homeless people. How can people complete the census? And they've made it very easy. It's a lot different than it was 10 years ago when we all did it. Now you can do it online using the internet or using your cellphone. You can do it over the telephone by calling the census call center that you'll have on your postcard when you receive it. You could fill out the paper form if you'd like. Or you could respond when the census takers come door to door. They'll be coming door to door to make sure everyone's accounted for. Census forms are available in 13 different languages. These are the questions that are asked on the census. Your name, your phone number, age, sex, citizenship, Hispanic origin, race, relationship to the householder, the household tenure, number of persons in the household, and does a person usually stay or live somewhere else? The last thing that I want to bring to everyone's attention this evening is there are a bunch of jobs. If anyone's looking at a way to earn some extra money, the census, and I think I sent it out to council, there's about 30 positions in Teller County that they're looking to fill. At $14 an hour. And you can work according to your schedule. Some of it could be night work. It could be day work. It could be weekend work. So if anyone's interested in making some extra money, be a census number taker.
How do we do that? Contact you?
No. It's right here on the website. It's the 2020 census. We also have it posted on the city website, and it's on our Facebook page. The same link, so. But if anyone wants to contact me, they can always. Thanks, Suzanne.
Suzanne, so that we all know, every person that's signed up and is counted in the census is a, is a number of dollars associated. How much do we lose out for every person that does sign up?
I have to look, Mayor. I want to see if I have that in my... Do you know that number? Is that why you're asking me?
I don't know the exact number. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
But the point is, if you can't find it, encourage...
$2,300 per person.
$2,300 per person. That money goes to...
All of those federally funded programs that I have the list of. And so here it says $13.1 billion to Colorado. So $2,300 per person.
Great. Thank you. The point is, we need to all be part of this census for a number of reasons. Not to mention the fact that $2,300 goes a long way in providing services for our community. So we still have till April of next year.
Yes.
And Suzanne's going to keep this updated throughout the process. And it sounds like the process will really get underway by the beginning of the year, March of next year.
Yes. And we have a committee that's formed already, and we are meeting monthly. It's called the Pike's Peak Area Complete Counts Committee. And we have representatives from businesses. We have educators, military folks on the committee, minority groups on the committee, arts and cultural groups, nonprofit groups, media help, neighborhood groups, data committee, faith groups, and government, which is where I represent you from.
Thanks for your work on this.
You're welcome.
Any questions, counsel? And we'll move on to the deer count. And we have our wildlife manager here today. Tim, I always mispronounce your last name. Cronin, Crain?
Crain.
Crain. Sorry. Welcome back, Tim. Just to give everybody a sense of what we're going to do now. Tim's going to give us a little update on the deer and the deer population. Counselor, we're not going to really have much discussion today in terms of where we're going to move forward. This is more of an informational update for us to, just to give us an idea of where we're at. And then we'll have a work session in the next month or so and determine how we're going to manage the deer that we have with Tim's assistance. And he's been a tremendous resource. So thanks for being here, Tim. And I'll turn it over to you. And I know Carol Harvey is highly involved in this also. So we're going to turn it over to the two of you and go from there.
Well, good evening, everyone. And thank you very much for having me. As you stated, I'm Tim Crain. I'm your local district wildlife officer. And really, tonight, I'm just going to be talking about the survey that we had this winter. And just a little bit of history with that. We have been conducting a survey here in Woodland Park for the last three years since 2017, with this year being the third year we've done it. And again, just want to stress that this is not a population estimate. To do a population estimate, that would be a six-figure study. And that would be a density study. So this is not a population estimate. This is a deer survey. And basically, it is a minimum count. And we're looking at where those deer are at on the landscape and also what our fawn production is. Is our population very productive or is it not very productive? And we'll have those numbers for you here in just a second. And this is a picture taken by one of my volunteers this winter at Tractor Supply. And as you can see, if you end up feeding deer, they can become very habituated to folks. That's not normal deer behavior, jumping up into the bed of a truck like that. This winter, we did our survey in February, as we've done the last two years. And as you can see, there's the city of Woodland Park laid out with some lines around it. Those lines are our zones that we use for this survey. So those zones are breaking up into an area of responsibility. We're doing a coordinated ground count, is what it's called. So we all come together, all the CPW employees. And we have several volunteers that come out and do this as well. We had some city employees, as well as councilmember Harvey came out as well. And we all meet in one location. And then we disperse from there into our respective zones. We have someone that's driving. That's their main job, is to drive for everyone's safety. And then we have observers that are also in the vehicle that are looking for the deer. Once we spot the deer, and they're working that zone, and I should say, they're doing it, you know, they can start out anywhere in that zone. It's not a route, so that there's not as much bias in this. If you were to have a route, they'd start in one spot and go through, following that exact route. But this leads to less bias in a study. So they're going to work their way through that route. Driver picks any route he wants to, but he's going to try and not go through that same route, that same street to make more duplicates in this count. And we'll talk about duplicates here in a minute. But when we find the deer, we're going to record the location and the time and the direction of travel. All that's very important so we can weed out any duplicates that we might have. And then we're going to look at the age and the sex of those animals. We're going to be looking for fawns and classifying them as well as any does or bucks, if we find any in that specific group of deer. Then we'll all get back into the vehicle and drive on till we find another group. And once all this is done, we're going to end. This year, we ended all at 5 o'clock. We all ended at the same time. Everyone turned their data in. Julie Stivers, our terrestrial biologist. And we went back, Julie and I. And it takes several weeks. I think this was completed in mid-April because we've got a lot of other surveys that we got to get through for deadlines and such. But we got through this one. And Julie and I weeded out all of the duplicates in that data that were obvious. And then we went through meticulously and made sure there wasn't any. And then we went through meticulously and made sure there wasn't any. So these are the absolute most conservative numbers that you're going to be getting. And we haven't talked about this in the past. We're talking about sighting conditions. Citing conditions can always come into play when you're doing a survey. So on our wildland counts, when we're flying in a fixed-wing plane or we're flying up in a helicopter, sighting conditions play an important role as well. So if you have a nice, clear day with a lot of snow on the ground, it's easy to see those animals running on the ground. If you have a really windy day that's cold, or a lot of snow coming down, or rain, that can affect your sighting condition. Now, we set a day that's probably a month out in advance. And again, that takes away some of the bias in a survey. And we're not going to change that date unless it's going to be unsafe for the people that are doing that count. So it was a very cold, windy day, I think, as you can attest. If you got out of the vehicle, you did not want to be out of the vehicle for very long. You wanted to get back in, because it was very chilly. So the deer are going to take this into account as well. And the deer behavior, when it's cold and windy like that, they don't want to be out in the wind either. They want to go find a nice, warm spot, or warm as possible. And so they're going to find cover. And that could look like, this picture was actually taken on the count, they're going to go find a thick group of trees. They may hide behind a log pile or behind a house. I've seen them underneath the decks and such, anywhere where they can get out of the wind and the elements and use some shelter. So it becomes harder to find and see when you have these sort of conditions. So take that into consideration. This shot is fairly zoomed in. If the shot wasn't so zoomed in, you can actually barely see the deer. They were tucked away up in some trees. So the deer aren't moving around a lot, so they're much harder to see. So here's a quick comparison over the last three years. If we start off at the top on 2019, for this year's data, you can see fifty-three groups of deer. We had two-hundred-and-seven was our total. And again, we removed all our duplicates, so that's your most conservative number. Now, I would attribute the lower number to our sighting conditions that day, for sure. And so would our biologist, Julie Stiver. And then, as you can see, a big number that jumps out there is our fawns per one-hundred does. We're over a hundred. We're at one-oh-five, which is quite high. As you can all see, it's a very productive population. We saw lots of triplets and twins out in that population when we were doing the survey. So with that, tonight, kept it nice and quick. And this was another picture that we took that day. But if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer any tonight.
Carol?
Really, the only comment I'd like to make is, the numbers confirm what is pretty obvious, I think, to the community, is that we do have a large deer population, particularly when you do the dota to fawn ratios. I'll have to say that when we finished the count and I went home, I mean, there were ten deer in my front yard, but I don't know if they got counted or not.
Should have asked them.
Yeah. But it is something that we do need to address. I think that the right approach at this point is to plan a work session. We can talk about some of the options. There have been some successful management plans in other communities. Tim has shared that with us before. But I'd like to be able to do that sooner rather than later, because any management plan that we decide to adopt is going to have timelines involved. And some very important ones are, when do you address the population if you're going to use a managed calling process? And that's, that timeline's got to be considered. So we can't wait until the middle of the summer to do this. We need to do it sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Miles, I'll just ask you, relative to the numbers and what you've seen over the last few years, how would you characterize the safety issue?
There's a lot of deer.
Because that's what we're all concerned with.
There's a lot of deer.
There's a lot of deer, yeah.
Right now, the two ways that I'm aware of that we're calling the animals are through some of the predators that we have in town. And I know that Tim's had to take some, at least one mountain lion out of here, if not more. I don't know if you've had to do the same for the bears. But I know that gets everybody pretty excited when they start seeing the lions come into town. And I know that's a byproduct of how many deer we have running around here. The other thing is, I know that we're using automobiles to help call the herd as well. We have a lot of car versus deer accidents around here. Not all of them get called in. And it's pretty rough when we have to go put the animals down after they've been hit by a car and have been sitting there for a while. So the one question I had for Tim, and you can probably give me an idea, what would an appropriate ballpark number of doe-to-fawn ratio be? Or what does an ideal one look like?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'll tell you what our surrounding, in the wildland, fawn-to-doe ratio looks like. If you take the three-year average, it's about seventy fawns per one-hundred does. And we do have, that's a little bit high for Colorado as well. We have productive, at least in the last three years, we've had productive populations. So that's what typically you would see in the woods, right around Woodland Park.
Anything else with Tim?
Paul? Yes, sir.
Have we noticed any diseases in the deer?
We do have chronic wasting disease. It is a positive unit, our game management unit, which Woodland Park falls in 511 and also Unit 59 as well. And both of those units are positive for chronic wasting disease.
Well, council, let's see, Suzanne, let's see if we can get this work session scheduled in the next, certainly, month or six weeks, whenever we can, next time available. And Tim, I always appreciate your time and your efforts and everything you do for the community. This is probably the smallest thing that you do, this presentation. But thanks for all you do and all your staff, and I'm sure you're going to be hearing from us.
Look forward to it, and thank you again for having me. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for letting me ride along.
That was absolutely. If anyone ever wants to ride along, public, anyone here, we're happy to have you out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have no additions, deletions, or corrections that I'm aware of. We'll move on to the consent calendar. And Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. We have one item on this evening's consent calendar, and that is the minutes from the April 18th, 2019 council meeting. I do have one correction to the minutes. It was under the city manager's reports. We had wrote that Sally informed the council of the strategic planning session. It should have been Darren informed the council. So my apologies for that one correction.
Thank you. Council, anything else on the minutes of April 18th? If not, we'll just call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. I have one person signed up, and if you're not signed up, sit tight and we'll get to you. Doloreta Barber.
Thank you for having me again this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you that our S.H.I.E.L.D. 616 fundraiser is almost there. We just have two more pledges come in, and we will have reached our goal, and we will be able to furnish shields for our Teller County Sheriff's deputies.
Great.
The other thing that we are working diligently on is our Blue Lives Matter tree. We set out with the goal of eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-five ribbons on the tree in Lyons Park. Today, we have approximately six-thousand-four-hundred ribbons done. So in the next couple of weeks, we have some great volunteers helping us to do that. And we are hoping that the dedication of that tree, with the help of our city manager and our mayor here, will take place on the 25th of May at 10:00 in the morning. So we hope to see you all there. And anything else that, I appreciate the assistance I've gotten from you. And I'm just looking forward to completing this assignment that we took upon ourselves to do. And thank you. And for now, you know, wishes luck, that everything will go well, and we will accomplish our goal by the 25th of May. Thank you.
Thanks, Doloreta.
Thank you, Doloreta.
Doloreta, everything's going to go well, because I'm going to make sure it does.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I am seeing blue in my dreams.
Thanks for not telling everybody that I'm one of the donors that you're waiting for their money.
Me too, Mayor.
I promised you I would have it to you by the 25th, and I will.
You guys are people who are...
And we'll take care of you, for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else that didn't sign up that would like to speak today under item agenda number six? No? Okay, then we will move on. We have no unfinished business tonight. We have three ordinances on initial posting, and we will start with Laura Pellegrino.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. So tonight, we are here for the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1345, series 2019, for a conditional use permit for Section 1809090F6, truck and trailer rental on Lot 1, Aspen Acres, with an address of 19251 East Highway 24 in the Community Commercial CC Zone District, as requested by Pete Labarre with Woodland Park U-Haul LLC. And the request is to schedule a public hearing for May 16th, 2019. So Mayor Levy, I believe that there may be a need to just ask council members if there's any bias related to this application?
Let's do that. Do you have any bias?
No, we're not.
Nope? Nothing?
Yes.
No discussion?
It's first reading.
First reading.
First reading, to approve first reading.
As far as whether or not you need to recuse yourself, it would be whether or not you have personal, pecuniary gain or loss invested in this particular issue?
I do not.
Why are we looking at you?
I know.
I know. Because she's got the last name as the applicant. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we're on initial posting. And if we just get a motion to approve, to set the hearing for May 16th, then we will have the public hearing on that day.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance, yes?
Mayor Levy, may I just add one item? So first of all, I just wanted to throw a slide showing you where the site is, and it's highlighted in green here. And that's the facade of the existing building. This application did go before the Planning Commission for consideration, and the Planning Commission did not make a recommendation at their last meeting on April 25th. We have scheduled another meeting on May 7th. So they will have a chance to make their final recommendation at that public hearing. And that will be completed before the May 16th meeting, when it comes back to council. So just so you know, this ordinance is in draft form and may be amended by the time it comes back on May 16th.
Thank you. Anything else, Laura?
No.
I'm sorry. Anything else, council?
Well, question. Should we postpone the initial posting until the Planning Commission gives me a recommendation? Is that necessary?
You have that ability, if you'd like to. Part of the Planning Commission's intent, and I was there at the meeting, was to not hold up the process. They wanted to further vet some issues, make sure they had all of the information, but didn't want to cause the process to push out with Julie.
You good with that, Carol? Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Laura. Okay, need a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 1345, series 2019, and set the public hearing for May 16th.
You want to hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on. And Jason Myers?
All right. In retrospect, maybe I should have created a PowerPoint, maybe not. But in your packet, you have two different ordinances, actually. And the reason being, part of it depends on what direction council wants to head. The ordinance is intended to make sure that our laws are up to date when we have our new dog park open here soon. So the difference between the two ordinances is one includes a codification of the rules at the dog park, so that they're easier for the police department to enforce. The other ordinance, as presented, does not include that. So it depends, basically, on how city council wants to move forward. If you want those rules codified, therefore, if there's rule breakers, they can be ticketed for those particular violations. Or if you would rather leave it, so they're just park rules and violators can be asked to leave.
Question. Do we not have a code now that addresses unleashed dogs?
Well, yeah. This would also change the leashing portion. The only difference between the two is adding whether or not people not cleaning up their mess in the dog park or bringing a vicious dog to the dog park. Those are the differences in the ordinances. As the code currently sits, it's illegal to have a dog off of a leash unless you're on private property with permission or a service animal in some instances. This ordinance, either version of the ordinance, will basically tailor specific exceptions for the dog park, so that your dog can be off-leash in that premises.
Why wouldn't we codify it?
It's a preference of council on how you want to enforce it if it's...
Julie?
Who would be the, if we did not codify, and it would just be asking the violator to leave, who would be asking the violator to leave?
It would be the police department, I mean, or city staff. There is a state statute that requires people to follow municipal rules for public property. There's mandatory fines involved in that. That would be a county court issue at that point. Wouldn't be my recommendation that you would utilize that process, although it exists. The reason I didn't want to presume that council wanted to codify this is, we, Mayor, may not wanting our police officers to issue citations for these particular types of violations. It's an unbroached subject, so that's why giving you the option is what policy you'd like to set.
Well, knowing that the one version would involve police intervention, I guess I would ask Miles if he knows any thoughts on it.
Thank you. Quite frankly, it's easier just to go with having it codified, so that we have the authority and the ability to do that. However, as in anything, use our discretion. For example, when we passed the deer ordinance as of today, I don't think we've written anybody that ticket for feeding deer. But we do have that as another tool that we can use down the road if it becomes an issue. So it makes our lives a lot easier, and we exercise discretion when we're out there. And so that would absolutely be a learning curve for something like this, having this dog park, being something new in our community and working with them to make sure it's successful.
From a policy analysis perspective, recent, there's been two anecdotal issues with terms of examples of park, dog parks that have been closed down recently in Evergreen and Breckenridge as a result of not having the users of those parks clean up after their dogs and leaving some environmental issues that forced the closure of those dog parks. So just want to make sure that city council, there is an impact if we're unable to enforce that. And the dog park could be closed if we can't keep it clean, so.
Summons is, there's summonses involved with quantifying and in the dog park, well, angry dogs and not picking up. Do you have an idea of what you would price a summons at? Or is that a discussion to take place later?
I guess, from a former prosecutor's perspective, it would depend on the circumstances. And I think, you know, certainly something to look at, if that's something we want to include in the schedule of fines for the police department, kind of to have a rule of thumb.
Well, I think with the exception of eating wildlife, we have a set penalty here for this meeting already.
And that would apply to the dog park?
Correct. These would be municipal ordinance violations. And that subject generally, you know, while we're briefly discussing it, and it is a topic for a later date, is something that municipal judge, myself, and Suzanne have talked about, and potentially updating that to make it a little bit more opportunity for discretion in the court. But that's certainly a topic for another day. If council would like to, you can certainly add specific fine schedules to this. Otherwise, it would just be the default of whatever the court feels is appropriate for that offense.
I just wanted to know that there was something in place that was organized, covered under our charters or rules, regulations, our courts, so that, you know, we're not being in the dark over the whole thing. That's all. I'm just asking a question for clarification. Thank you. Okay, council, if we all agree, then...
It's first reading.
We will, on first reading, will ask for a motion that would include the codification?
If that's what council desires. So that motion basically pick which ordinance you want to move forward with.
Which one is the, of the codification, your two reasons?
That's the only one we're looking at.
Yeah.
They both have the same number.
I think they have the same numbers. It's just a matter of clarifying which one you want us to move forward with.
So the question is, one is you would fine, and the second one, you would just ask them to leave?
Correct.
Right, okay.
And ultimately, as was pointed out previously by our police chief, you know, officers have discretion, and there's nothing in this language codifying it that would require summonses to be issued or required, anything. You know, we're basically making it so that they have the tools in their toolbox to address an issue if it becomes one.
Does the motion also have any other discretion for codification? That the ordinance that includes some penalty for violating?
Do I have a second? I'll second him. Okay, any other discussion? Doesn't sound like everyone's on the same page, man.
I would like to just ask the question about... Can't even remember now, because you guys took so long. I'll think of it, but...
What do you think of it?
I'll think of it for the public hearing. How's that?
Well, that would be...
Yes.
So does the motion stand? Do we have a motion and a second? And Suzanne?
Labar?
I hate to further regulator tax, so I've got to say no.
Levy?
Yes.
Swenier?
Soynier?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes, but point of information, the first reading, really you only have an option to vote yes or no.
You're voting on the choice of ordinance?
The choice of ordinance.
Motion carries for one, thank you.
Great, thank you. And we'll have that discussion.
To set the public hearing?
That will go forward for public hearing.
It's so noted in the record, that sufficient, Jason?
So, yes.
So we're going to, we're going to revisit this May 16th, correct?
Correct.
Okay. You good with that, Carol?
Oh, sure.
Okay, because it's not, it's not written out, so I'm glad you pointed that out for us. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item 8C, and Mike Farina.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Tonight you have before you the first reading and setting the public hearing for supplemental appropriation number two. Just a reminder, supplemental appropriation number one was regarding adding $80,000 to the budget for the Kelsey Barret search, or investigation, and that was offset by an increase in $40,000 in revenue, and then the other 40 coming from excess revenues from the prior year. So this is the second supplemental, and it's, it's pretty common to do these for carryover items, items that were, for projects that were budgeted in the prior year but not completed, or purchases that were made from the prior year budget but we didn't receive the item until the current year. So that's what the majority of this supplemental appropriation is, is carryovers, and I'll go into more detail in the public hearing, but it is carryover of items from 2018 budget. There are also new revenues to fund new expenditures, for example, the dog park, the, an electrical vehicle charging station, which is grant funded, and adding revenue for the gray and black marijuana grant. Also discussed in the work session today was the comp study and the results, or the proposed implementation of the comp study results. And we had, let's see, in the, in the, in that work session, a question was asked, what if we implemented 100%? And I was able to go run those numbers, and the general fund, for example, the propos, or the supplemental that will be brought forward in the second reading was 39,000 to the general fund. If we implemented 100%, it would be 129,200, or about $90,000 more than what was presented in the work session, just as, as was asked. And what that would do to the fund balance reserve would be, it would put it at 15.9%. But anyway, this, what you have before you is the supplemental, number two. The other funds that are being requested for an increase is the, is the grants fund, because we did receive a couple of grants, Peace Officer Mental Health Support Grant, and then the Electrical Vehicle Charging Grant. In the streets fund, we also need to carry forward, because the project was not started in 2018, so we're carrying over the entire $240,000 in the, from the 2018 budget for the Safe Routes to Schools grant. And also, I inadvertently omitted the carryover for the Park Street project, that was started in 2018, continuing in 2019. That's, that will be added to the second reading as well. I believe it's about $200,000 that will need to be carried forward. And again, these are monies that were budgeted in 2018, and so there's no impact to fund balance, bottom line. And then in the Water Utility Fund, remember we purchased some water shares that we had to act quickly to, to secure those, so we are now adding that money to the budget in the water fund. And with that, any questions?
Kelly?
Um, when will we, when, when are we going to receive audit?
Um, I plan on having the auditors be, to be here next council meeting, May 16th.
Okay.
I should have a draft prior to that, though. They just called me today and said they were going to send it to me by tomorrow.
And you're still not disclosing what our undesignated fund balance is for the general fund per audit? And it's okay if you don't?
No, I, I, I'm comfortable with that. It's, it's looking like it's going to be about 17.7% ending 2019 with 2018's results. So that's why we can also add the supplemental for the compensation study.
But you don't have a dollar amount?
No.
For 2018?
Not a problem.
That you're willing to tell me? Okay, I'll call you tomorrow, thank you.
Carol?
Um, I know this is the first reading, but what can that gray marijuana grant be used for?
Good question, thank you. This is something we've been doing for a couple of years. Basically, all it does is, it's a reimbursement grant, so we didn't just receive 15 grand to use. There, we have to submit quarterly reports for it. I think we used a couple of grand in the first quarter of this year, and it's just for investigation and prosecution related to gray and black marijuana cases. So, yeah, so that's all, that's all that's for, it's not just a, it's specifically for that. Yep.
Thanks.
And so, and at this point, we're not looking to use all that money, based on how we're trending at this point. Sir?
I'm a little naive. What is gray and black marijuana?
Illegally produced marijuana, marijuana grows, cartel grows, things like that. So when we have an illegal grow in town, we've legalized marijuana in a lot of ways, however, some people decide that they don't want to follow the law, and then we come in to a compliance check, and if they are significantly out of compliance, then we take down their operation and dispose of it.
Is that black?
Yes.
And gray marijuana is borderline, or, I, I don't understand.
I wasn't prepared to answer this question, Mr. Sam.
I'm sorry, I just...
But yes, it's, it's for the illegal growing of marijuana, the illegal possession of marijuana, the illegal sale of marijuana. It's all related to people who are not able to, or choose not to, work within the boundaries of the law at this point. So primarily, it's the grows that we're dealing with.
Thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Is it also underage possession?
No, it's not underage possession, no ma'am. So these are typically people who are egregiously over. They've decided they want to grow, you know, hundreds and hundreds of plants versus their allotted number.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, motion to approve ordinance 1347, non-initiative posting, please.
I'll move to approve.
Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Lebar?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Suzanne, thanks, Michael, we'll look forward to, will we get to talk to you on the 16th of May?
Yes.
Good.
It's the day before his last day.
Day before your last day. Okay, the penultimate day. All right, no public hearings tonight, and no new business, we'll move on to reports. And mayor's report, I just have a couple of announcements. Saturday, May 4th, 6 o'clock, at the new and improved Ute Pass Cultural Center, will be the Woodland Park Wind Symphony Jurassic Travel through Sight and Sound. I understand that's going to be tremendous. And then Friday, May 3rd, Pike's Peak Environmental Film Festival and Expo is at the Woodland Park High School. So that's on May 3rd. That's all I have. Kelly?
Um, Darren, is staff going to talk about the mini cleanup and the citywide cleanup? Not yet?
I'll, I'll add that to mine.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Hillary?
Nothing this evening.
Paul?
Today is National Day of Prayer. Please keep us in your prayer, local government, schools, and our federal government, and I appreciate everybody who participates in these meetings and watches on YouTube. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will move on to city attorney.
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Okay, Darren?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, I'm gonna, I'll give a couple of reports, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ben and Sally for some additional comments. First, I wanted to, as you know, announce publicly, we are, we'll be, we'll be losing our, our finance director on May 17th. And so, Michael believing us, we're sad to see him go, but he'll be going, moving on to a, a new, new endeavors in, in, along I-25 corridor up in Castle Pines, as the new finance director there. Mike, I don't know if you want to make any comments or not, I would kind of throw you off on that one, but just want to, just want to let city council know that, that will be happening. And then Monae, who was right behind Mike there, will be taking over as the interim finance director as we, as we go out and, and seek a replacement for Mike. So we appreciate Monae stepping in and taking on that responsibility, and we'll miss Mike as well. One of the things I wanted to touch on was the July 4th city council meeting is on a Thursday, obviously, so we're looking at, we clearly would like to make a recommendation to city council that, that we're gonna, we would cancel that meeting, and we'd like to reschedule it. My recommendation, and staff's recommendation, is June 26th, the Wednesday, June 26th, and we just want to survey the city council to make sure that would be okay with, with you for that.
Why not on Thursday?
Thir, yeah, planning commission, conflict here in the city council chambers.
And just refresh council and everyone else's memory that we will be canceling on the, what day?
20th of June.
20th.
Which means we'd be out of, we wouldn't have a meeting for up to six weeks if we did not reschedule this meeting.
Okay, so that, that first meeting in June would then be the 6th, and then we'd have one on the 27th, correct?
26th.
20, excuse me, it's 26th because of planning.
Yes.
6th and the 26th. So council, we just need a knot of heads to move that meeting from the 4th back to the 26th, if that's okay for everybody.
For, okay.
You got it?
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Ben to brief city council on the Park Street update and on the EV grant.
So quickly, I'll go through our Park Street progress. I, you guys have seen Park Street's closed off Highway 24, because we are doing all the milling and putting in the new street that's going to go in there. So once that asphalt's all done, it's going to look really good. And so what we did was yesterday, they completed all the milling operations, so you saw it all torn down to the base layer, and then they're going to look at doing initial lift on Saturday and final lift on Monday, pending our C dot permit, so we're going to try to get that lane closed on 24 just for the morning bit, so they can back the machine up and start from 24, and then move down, and then we'll remove the closure barriers. But it should look really nice when it's done, and I'm excited, because it fixes a lot of those drainage issues that we've had there. And then the other thing I wanted to let you guys know is, we won the grant for Charger Head Colorado for the electric vehicle charging station. So where we're looking at placing that is at Bergstrom Park, and it was a $9,000 grant, so we have to do this whole project for under that amount, but it's a pretty cool system that adds some more uniqueness to Woodland Park that we have one of these charging stations. But basically what it is, is it's a pedestal that's going to sit right about here, and what you do is you pull your electric vehicle in, and you've got two places to charge, it's a dual port system, and basically you just pay for the electric that you use, so it's a, it's a nonprofit type of thing. The citizens who are plugging in would just pay for that electricity that they use to charge their car.
How do you pay for that, Ben?
So there's charge cards that you can get, and basically it's an RFID thing where you hold it up to the scanner, and there's going to be a little video screen that we, that will give you instructions on how that works. And so it's not with your typical credit card, but you can get these charger high cards, and a lot of electric vehicle users have them, from what I understand. I don't own an electric vehicle myself, but you basically just go up and scan it, and then it unlocks the port, and you can bring it and plug it into your car, and it averages for this Level 2 charging station about four hours, from what I've heard. So gives folks a chance to walk around downtown and shop and spend some money, and then they can come back and pick their car back up. But a lot of folks who have electric vehicles have contacted me, and they said they're pretty excited about this charging station that we have here.
What does that cost?
So from my estimates, I've seen it, it costs roughly about $5 to charge your car.
I'll bring up some additional information about this if you don't mind.
Yeah.
The, so this would be the second of, of two charging stations in Woodland Park, there's only one other right now that's going to be located at the Microtel Hotel. So before that, we only, we didn't have any at all. This, the intent for this, the recommendation to, to seek this grant was related to the potential economic impact of putting it downtown and seeing those with the electric cars being able to park their vehicle, charge, and go take advantage of our downtown area. So there's that, and there's also the one that would be placed at the Microtel Hotel in the future. So really happy to, to see this awarded to Woodland Park.
Do you need to pull up the revenue?
No, it's just indirect, because obviously it'll, you know, we see it impacting our retail operations for the city, improving, increasing the number of people that come to the community and stay here and spending money in our downtown, so.
And the Microtel charging station, correct me if I'm wrong, they're managing it themselves? They're providing all the, all the costs associated, they're doing that themselves?
Public and private organizations can seek these grants, and that's why they sought one as well, and were awarded one, so.
Do you think Microtel's only be available to their...
I would assume, I mean, you could, you could open up to, to anybody, that'll be up to the, the property owner, though.
Oh, but at this point, you don't know that.
I would, I would assume, yes, but that's, we don't know. So, any other, any questions for Ben in relation, relations to the project? Brendan, you have any more you wanted to add? I'm sorry.
No, that's great. Yeah, but just pretty excited about it, to get this thing in and done.
When we have it in and done?
Uh, that'll be June 1st is when we have to for the grant.
Wait.
So we have a month.
And if you know, there's, if, these are georeference, most people have electric cars, they're coming into town, they, they'll, they'll be notified where these, these are located. So it is still visible on I-24, but they'll, they can actually seek these out and know, know where these are at in the community, so.
What else?
Um, so I'll bring Sally up to talk about the, the mini cleanup.
Good evening, counsel. We have had with Main Street, DDA, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, city staff, two collaborative meetings to address the cleanliness and the beautification of our downtown. And they've been very productive meetings with about 12 folks visiting, understanding about the flowers, the sweeping, and the general cleanliness of our downtown. And so, part of the placemaking project with Main Street is to focus on downtown to become a very attractive and inviting space for both our residents and visitors. And so we're going to try something a little bit different this year, before Memorial Day, is to have a mini cleanup focused totally on our core downtown, and it will be scheduled on May 22nd. It's a Wednesday morning that we will be sweeping and washing, washing all the lamp posts, the railings, the signs, and really sprucing things up so that it's very clean. And it's been great working with Public Works and Steve Varner, who this is his first summer with flowers and all the get up and go. So thanks to Keller Williams, they're going to provide some volunteers. We hope to have about 15 to 20 volunteers the morning of May 22nd to really hit hard the downtown area, not only picking up litter, but washing and sweeping and sprucing things up. So if you'd like to help us with that, happy to include you. And then after Memorial Day on June 8th, we will have our citywide cleanup, and that will begin at the Cultural Center on that Saturday morning with folks registering, and then we send them out to various spots along the rights of way to pick up litter, and usually we are able to fill a 10-yard dumpster of trash and litter that we just pick up in public spaces. So usually we also have about 100 folks who will show up, and they are rewarded with a barbecue and music afterwards. So mark your calendar for both, May 22nd in the morning, we will be meeting at Woodland Square, which is right next to the Gear Lab, and so come on by. Do RSVPs, so to make sure we know how many teams of people we'll have to give assignments to.
On the 22nd of May, that one has talked about power washing. I know we've had this discussion in previous years. Is there an issue with power washing allowed at Woodland?
We will not be power washing, per the state requirements. However, Ben has been working with our Streets and Drainage Crew as per the budget. We had a VACcon budgeted for this year, and the new VACcon, we may be able to separate solids and liquids and be able to start power washing again. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up. And also, that VACcon that we're looking at that could do that is, takes about nine months to get here.
Is that a big shot for that?
It's, if you've seen our VACon that we use for water mains and sewer repairs, it's similar size to that, just a little bit, we would like something smaller, because for our drainage ditches, it can get, it's more mobile when you get into those places. So we will not be power washing, but like Sally said, they will be washing with buckets and sponges, lamp posts and things, signs, and things of that nature.
After talking with the, sorry. After talking with the vendor for the VACon truck that we're looking at, there's a special valve, it's this decanter valve that can separate out the solids and the liquids pretty effectively, and I asked them specifically about this for this purpose, and they said they've had luck with this in the past, and that that's what they use there. So I'm optimistic with this new machine that we'll be able to do this correctly and comply with the environmental regulations, yep.
There is, there's still one little aspect or hurdle we're trying to get across as far as the disposal of that water at this point.
Thank you.
So because if you've read the history section of the Courier this last week, in fact, 50 years ago, it was declared by former Mayor Carroll Kinney to be the, it was the Second Annual Cleanup, Paint Up, Fix Up Week, and he quoted, "Help us make our town the showplace of Pike's Peak region with this tourist season approaching." So even over 52 years ago, the town was working every May to try to spruce things up. So hopefully, you can come out and pitch in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Sally.
See it, Darren?
No, I'm here. Excuse me. We have to, I'm going to give you the script. We have to do a motion to move into executive session, and I realize you don't have the script.
Oh, I got it. I don't have the script, but...
Right. I'm going to get to you.
Good.
Um, I do have to choose, and I need Jason's head. You have the script?
4E, that we asked for.
Yeah. So is that good? Okay. So this is what we'll be asking, a motion to move into executive session for this reason.
Okay.
Here, 4E.
That's it?
Yeah, so we will, we will do the first, just here. CRS Section 246...
Do you want a pencil?
On, nothing here.
Here's a pencil.
Thank you. We will move to executive session. This executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, in subsection 4E, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators all related to real property acquisition for the aquatic center. Is that correct?
Real property.
Oh, okay. That's the one that's, okay. So restate that, for, okay, for instructing negotiators all regarding a Second Amendment to a disposition and development agreement, we need a motion. Council?
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Sounier?
Yeah. No, I'm not happy about it, but I'm gonna go, yeah.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
We'll move to executive session, and we'll come back and adjourn the meeting, assuming anybody's here. If not, we will adjourn the meeting upstairs. Thank you all for being here.
I'm sorry that we didn't have this for you.
Well, we kind of did. That's why I was gonna, if I'd just read this, we would have been fine. Yes?
This is on our agenda, so it's funny. Look, see, you have a different way.
Well, I got two, but it's on this one.
Okay.
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 All right. We're good, we're going upstairs? No, well, I'm good. No big deal.
Yeah, we're going upstairs.
Okay.
Howdy.
Well...